For the state tournament as an alternate. And so again, you guys, we are so very proud of you. Um, you know, you, you were the only people that can say that you were the first to do this. And so we're, we're always proud of y'all's accomplishments. But when it's the first, it's really special. So congratulations to both of you. Uh, Joel is a junior and David is a sophomore. So my guess is it probably won't be the last time we see you guys and recognize you. So congratulations. And moms, you can go ahead and take pictures too. Okay, good.
Want to introduce your family because it is a team sport.
Yeah.
They help out a lot.
So right here, my dad, my mom, my brother Eli, and my younger brother Pablo.
Oh, awesome. Well, next time, no, no breaks, okay? Next time, alright.
Um, right there is my brother Sam, my younger wife.
Yes.
Uh, my mom Jenny, and then that's my dad, Devin.
And of course, of course, Coach Clark is here with them as well. So, and thank you, Coach. Again, you've done a tremendous job with this program. Absolutely, come on.
Coach Clark has built this program. He was just asking to start the program, but he said, I promise you an X amount of years, we're gonna have people at state. He was right. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm glad to see you up here once in a while.
Yes, yes, yes.
Our next item is recognition of national board certified teachers.
We are pleased to present two teachers to you who have achieved beyond the state level um, to receive their national board certification from the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards. Uh, Jo Mika Gray is a kindergarten teacher at Western Hills. She's been with the district for seven years and earned her early childhood generalist national board certification. That designation certifies her to teach all areas in kindergarten through second grade. Uh, Ms. Gray also earned a higher designation um, of exemplary teacher through the teacher incentive allotment. Sabrina Du Canons is an instructional coach at Ray Allen Elementary. Du Canons, she is in her 12th year in Temple ISD and earned her middle uh, childhood generalist certification, which certifies her in all subjects in grades two through six. She credits completing the process of earning her national board certification with giving her the push to move from the classroom into an instructional coaching role. And um, you saw them hug and kind of embrace as they're up there because they are bonded for life. Cause it is wonderful that you are here, but it, I don't even think we could do justice or credit to all that you did to achieve this accomplishment. Um, and, and very few across uh, the state of Texas ever do, um, and even across the nation. And so we are truly so proud of you guys for going above and beyond and for earning this distinction. And you, you truly make Temple ISD shine. So congratulations.
And having been in both of their classrooms with Temple ISD. I'm gonna tell you.
That Christine's right, the certificates do no justice. I mean, they do magic in the classroom. They are fantastic. And thank you for sharing your talents with our kids. Appreciate it.
No, we're gonna let, no, hang on, hang on, hang on. We gotta get, we gotta let Mr. Gray. Are you good? Okay, alright. And would y'all like to recognize your families? I know you have family members here.
Um, I have my husband here who's definitely been quiet behind everything that goes on. Um, it definitely could not happen if it was brought him and he's been home down the floor to making sure he's fucking his shit. Um, he doesn't give credit where it's due.
And I have my two kids with me. I have Grayson, who is a seventh grader, and Skylar, who is a second grader. And unfortunately, my husband's on a work trip in Louisiana, so he couldn't make it back, which is fine because we're going to thank him this weekend. So he needed a finish before we left.
Well deserved. Yes, exactly. Exactly. So congratulations, we truly are so proud of you two.
And the next item is TASB Business Recognition Program, Lamar Advertising.
Have our teammates from Lamar come forward. Businesses and organizations and nonprofits across central Texas contribute every day to Temple ISD, and we really rely on their support. And Lamar Advertising is one of these district partners. And we are pleased to announce that the generosity that you have shown to us is now recognized at the state level. And the Texas Association of School Boards joins with us in honoring your valuable support for our district. Um, many of you are familiar with the Wildcat billboard that's right over here kind of behind me as you go up the, the bridge over the tracks. And that is courtesy of Lamar. It took us actually several years to figure out who did that and where it came from. We were kind of like, it just showed up one day. And we were just, oh wow, that's amazing. Um, so that's one. Um, uh, there are a lot of things in between, but just one of the most recent things was featuring a couple of our former students, alumni, who participated in the NAACP, an N double A, uh, I can't even say. The national championship, the football national championship, whatever that is. NCAA, that's right. Yes, okay, NCAA. Um, uh, and they featured our two former students on uh, video billboards to show their support. And uh, again, that's just what you guys do. You see a need, you see a way that you can support, and you jump in. And I will say that you guys are always at the top of that jump in list. Um, always ready to do and offer anything that you can to support us. And we are truly, truly grateful for that support. Um, it does make a difference to our students and our families and our staff and our community. So thank you. Yes. Yes. And those are the end of our recognition, so you are welcome to leave or you're also welcome to stay. Uh, either one, we understand.
Item five is the executive hires and Dr. Adams.
Sorry, I was introducing people. Did he say it? Yes, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Posey. I'm over here talking, it's my fault, I apologize. So um, the interview committee consisting of Renata Rogers, Jenny Matheson, Connie Cisneros, Nikki Murphy, Michelle Rhodes, Amanda Kendrick, Ashley Carroll, and myself, interviewed for the position of the Executive Director of Elementary Education on February 21st of 2023. And we selected um, Dr. Sarah Watson as the lone finalist for this position. Dr. Watson graduated from Evangel University um, in 1999 with a Bachelor of Social Work. She graduated with a Master of Education in Educational Administration from Tarleton University in 2005, and a Doctor of Educational Leadership degree in 2021 from the University of Mary Harden Baylor. Dr. Watson has served as a, as a teacher, an avid coordinator, a campus instructional specialist, an assistant principal, and she's currently the principal of Reese's Creek Elementary School in Clean ISD. Uh, she's also served as a campus principal in Flugerville ISD. Um, Dr. Watson has been married to her husband Joshua Watson for 25 years, and Joshua was a member of the Army Band, which uh, is how they made their way to Texas. Together, they have two sons, Christian, who's 16 and attends Hendrickson High School in Flugerville ISD, and Judah, a fifth grader at Merchinson Elementary in Flugerville. Both little boys love to play soccer, um, which is where her family spends most of their time on the weekends. In her free time, Dr. Watson enjoys reading, watching movies, hiking, and watching her boys play soccer. She and her husband pastor a small church in Hutto, which they launched eight years ago. Dr. Watson believes that a child's education can change their life, and that happens from the time they enter school at the age of four. She's excited to have a direct voice and influence with the instructional work of Temple ISD, which already has a strong reputation within our community. And it's with great pleasure that the interview committee recommends Dr. Sarah Watson to the Board Trustees for approval for the position of the Executive Director of Elementary Education.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Uh, members, are there any questions? This does require approval.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Gowen.
Seconded motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes, well, same side to pose. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. It's approved.
Uh, Dr. Ott, Board President Posey, and school board members, it is my absolute honor to be named the Executive Director of Elementary Education for Temple. The foundation of my leadership is my belief that as a leader, we have a responsibility to love, support, grow, and stretch those we lead. As a leader in public education, this is even more important because our leadership affects the lives of children. One thing that drew me to Temple ISD is that all the core values, as I read them, reflect directly back and speak to the work that we do with our children. Every child should have an opportunity to grow and be anything they want to be in their life. And so joining a team of educators who also believes this, and they fight for this and work towards this is my honor and privilege that I don't take lightly. You have my promise tonight that I will diligently with focused passion continue to enhance the excellent instructional work of the children of our school district. So thank you very much. And I was told I should say, go Cats. And to introduce my family to you tonight, um, my husband Joshua, he's with me tonight. And then our, our youngest son Judah is also with us tonight. And my high school student had prayer commitments at high school, so that's why he's not here.
Congratulations, Dr. Watson. Welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you. Item six is the Board President's Report. A, consideration for approval of certification of unopposed candidates for District Two, Five, and Seven. So that's, no one filed, so this does require approval? Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Mrs. Myers.
Seconded motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign? Ayes have it. Motion passes. Item B, consideration for approval of order of cancellation of trustee election for Districts Two, Five, and Seven. This does also require a motion.
A motion.
A motion by Ms. Suarez.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same post, uh, pose the same side? Ayes have it. Thank you. Alright. Item C, consideration for approval of naming the Temple High School Library. In accordance with Board Policy CW Local, the Temple ISD Board of Trustees shall have final authority and responsibility for the naming and renaming of district facilities and parts of facilities. The Board directs the superintendent to solicit recommendations of names from staff, students, and the community, which is done through an online application on the district's website. Each nomination is submitted to the Communications Department through this online form, and nominations are forwarded to the Board Policy Committee. In a timely manner prescribed by the Board, the committee shall submit to the Board a list of recommended names who will review and modify their recommendations as the Board deems appropriate. The Policy Committee shall select and submit to the Board one name from the list of recommended names for each campus or facility to be named. In August of 2021, Mary Strube Adams' name was submitted through the online nominations process by a group of former colleagues and was added to the list of recommended names for consideration by the Policy Committee later that year. Mary Strube Adams was a highly educated and important influence in advanced academics for all students in Temple ISD. Working for the district in several capacities for over 45 years, impacting countless students and staff. Board, at this time, we shall consider the following recommendation from the Policy Committee. Consideration to name the Temple High School Library in honor of Mary Strube Adams. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Gowen.
Seconded motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same side? Ayes have it. Thank you very much. This is a very significant honor for Ms. Adams and everything she did for the students. You know, she touched my life when I was a student and even my son's life just a few years ago. So quite a range here in TISD, so. And uh, with the motion carrying, the district administration will begin planning for a dedication ceremony that will most likely take place later this summer. More details will follow when plans have been finalized. Okay? Item D is future items of discussion. Any items the Board wished to consider for a future meeting? Okay? E is important dates, and Dr. Ott.
Okay, this will be quick. Um, tomorrow, we have our groundbreaking for Sampson Howard Elementary, 10 a.m. And by the way, are we wearing our Board shirts for that? I guess. We're wearing the white one? Okay. So are we not wearing them then? Or are we wearing them?
Yeah. I can't, so yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, professional attire, probably best.
Alright. Um, let's see, what else do we have? Friday, March 10th, the Little Joe Hernandez concert. And we're all gonna wear our shirts for that, right?
Yeah.
Spring, yeah, we're gonna sit in the front row. Blue, white, we're in the blue ones. Yeah. White, they'll spill something on us. Um, so spring break the next week, and then um, we do not have a, um, the Board Retreat March 23rd. We do have a job fair, March 25th. It's always good if you have an opportunity to walk around during that. Uh, and then we have our Policy Committee, the 29th, and the 30 Facilities Committee. Uh, one thing that, um, under future items of discussion, I'm not going back per se.
Is the Board Retreat been canceled?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
You mentioned the Board Retreat on the 23rd.
Yeah, I said it was canceled.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, it's been canceled. At the next Policy and Facilities Committee meeting, I'll need to catch you guys up on um, Chapter 313 and what that is. Uh, there's a lot of talk about it. Uh, I know Brandy and I are on a research and investigate and explore, whatever you want to call it. A lot of good information today. It's something that's being discussed in legislative session. It was actually sunset December of 2022. Uh, so it'll most likely be restored, but I'll need to be able to explain to you what that is. So just remember that's coming, Policy and Facilities Committee. And if you have any questions about that between now and then, you can give me a call. We can talk about it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ott. Item seven is consent items, Items A through E2. What is the pleasure of the Board to deal with these items?
I make a motion that we uh, approve 7A through E2 altogether.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Gaines.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Ayes have it. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I do want to make a comment about D1, the portable rental, because I know portables are something that we said we're getting rid of. Uh, next year, Ray Allen, due to the number of students that we'll be getting, uh, and projected, of course, the school won't be open until 24, so this next year we'll have to carry a lot of extra students. Uh, so that is, that is what that, those particular portables are for. And instead of busing kids all over the community at different campuses, we felt like it would be better to concentrate them there at their home zone and then go from there. Several of us are involved with working with the campus administration on planning for that growth next year. Everything from lunchtimes, number of students, specials, electives, arrival dismissal time, you name it. So we'll get, we'll have a plan together and we'll share it with all of you in the summer and make sure, or before the summer, and make sure parents are notified of everything, so.
Alright, thank you. Item, item eight is action items. A, human resources. One, teacher incentive allotment, TIA update for 2022, 2023. Dr. Ward.
Okay, hello, good evening. I'm here to just kind of fill you in on the teacher incentive allotment and update you where we are at this point in um, in the application process and the implementation process. So if you'll remember that the teacher incentive allotment is part of House Spill 3, and it was developed to recruit, retain, and reward our highly effective teachers in our neediest campuses. And as you know, Temple ISD um, has a high poverty rate of students, and so all of our campuses really qualify as a high needs campus. There are two pathways that you can um, pursue to become a national board certified teacher. The first is through the national board certification process, which we recognized Sabrina and Jo Mika for tonight. That is about a two-year process, if not longer. And so the work they put into that is, is tremendous. And so we were certainly proud of their accomplishments. The second pathway is through our local designation system, which is what I'm gonna talk to you about tonight. And um, I, I wasn't sure if they were gonna be able to show up, so I put them on here really quick. Okay, so there are three designations a teacher can earn under the teacher incentive allotment. That is recognized, exemplary, and master. And with those designations comes a monetary award. So anywhere between $3,000 and $32,000. However, our teachers in Temple will not earn, ever earn $32,000 because we are not a rural district. And rural districts get two extra bumps in the compensation scale for the teacher incentive allotment. Um, once they earn a designation, they keep that designation for five years. Um, they cannot go backwards. So if they earn a master and the next year their data says they're exemplary, they keep that master rating. However, they can go higher. So this year, if they earn a recognized and the next year's data say, says they're exemplary, then they get that exemplary rating and their five years starts over. So it's, it's good for our teachers. TEA says there are two major components that have to be part of our plan, and that's teacher performance and student growth. And, and they have to be a significant part of the plan. We can't say teacher performance is 20% and student growth is 20%, and our added component is 60%. Our plan would fail. So they have to be significant, um, a significant portion of our plan. And then we did add Domain Four to help support leadership capacity. So our teacher performance percent is 40% of our overall plan. Student growth is 50%, and then professional practices and responsibilities is 10% of our plan. We applied, our original application was Cohort D, and we um, asked that our reading and math teachers participate in the teacher incentive allotment. In Cohort E, we added science and social studies. And then our intent for Phase Three, Cohort F, was to include everyone else. But we quickly learned through Cohort D and through Cohort E, especially the CNI department who has to pick up the um, the, the major piece of building out those exams, um, that that's not feasible. We can't, we can't do everybody. So we targeted um, Fine Arts and CTE and Loote Teachers for Phase Three. After reviewing different assessments that they could use for um, teacher incentive allotment, we gave them the three options. Do you want to still continue with TIA? Do you want to not continue with the local designation system but pursue national board? Or do you just not want to pursue it at all? So Fine Arts said we want to um, pursue national board certification. Um, CTE said they're not sure um, if they want to pursue national board or continue looking for other exams that we can use to, to track student growth. And then um, Loote said that they weren't sure either. They wanted to continue looking at uh, other assessments. So in Cohort F, we are only putting forth a change in the assessment that we're gonna use for pre-K. We're moving from Circle to Frog Street. And then we will meet with um, Loote and CTE again next year to see if they want to participate. So it will be an ongoing assessment whether or not we're gonna do that. Any questions about that so far? Okay, so teacher performance, remember, is 40% of our plan, and it focuses on Domains Two and Three of the T, T Test appraisal system that we use for teachers. And so there are eight dimensions within those two domains. And so each dimension gets assigned a point value based on the rating the teacher receives. So if a teacher receives a proficient on do, uh, Dimension 2.1, they receive three points. They can earn up to 40 points um, total, which would give them um, that full 40%. To ensure that our administrators are rating the same across the district, because I'm sure teachers want that to be true um, for them as, as they're being rated, uh, we do calibrate with our campus administrators and our district administrators that uh, we, we task to go into a second appraisal if, if it's needed. And so I am happy to say that our calibration so far, we have been calibrated, and that just means that we're within one rating of each other. So if Ms. Myers rates a teacher proficient, and I rate, rate a teacher accomplished, we're within one rating of each other. If it's more than one rating difference, then we are not calibrated and we have to go back and, and, and try again. Okay? So we've done really well in that area. Student growth, so we have different assessments for different levels. At the elementary level, we are using the MAP assessment. Um, and we've been using that since the beginning of TIA, and our elementary teachers feel pretty comfortable with those assessments. So there's no change there. We do look at beginning of year tests compared to end of year tests to determine growth. Secondary, originally, we had um, them using the MAP assessment, but what we quick, quickly realized is that it's really not an appropriate test for secondary because it's just another test to qualify for TIA. So it's not as, um, they're not as bought in to the assessment process. So we did switch um, So we did switch our assessments for secondary. So any, any area that has a previous STAR test result, that will be the student's pre-test. And Lisa, you know, I always get this wrong, so correct me if I, if I mess it up. And then they will use this current year's, that current year STAR test as their end-of-year assessment to determine growth. Any content area that does not have a STAR test prior, a prior STAR test, then they, they will take a district-created assessment, created by the CNI department, and they will take a district-created end-of-year assessment, and then we will determine what that growth looks like. For pre-AP, for AP classes, IB classes, we will use.
So we use a, a pre-assessment that's helped the teachers give input on, and then we're using the post-assessment as the AP assessment or the IB assessment. So the, the goal here is to not overtest students. We've really backed away from assessments that we've been using in our, our district assessment calendar as much, much more minimized, and so it's really looking at it comprehensively. So if there's a, if there's an assessment there based on course requirements, we haven't added an assessment to that, and that was based on teacher input.
Thank you. And then, like I said, pre-K, we have been using Circle Assessment, and we quickly realized that we had to look at the data differently because then everybody would have been a master teacher, and our system would not have been considered valid. And so we are going to move to Frog Street this next school year, not this year, but the next school year, as our assessment, and it more accurately aligns to our standards that we're using as well. So in order for a student to count as a yes for a teacher, they had to have taken and been assigned to that teacher for the fall assessment, for PEEMs winter enrollment, and for the spring assessment. And then they also have to take the, the assessment in the same language, which is either English or Spanish. And then the teacher should have at least 15 unique growth records, which is 15 students to count for the teacher incentive allotment. So what we have to determine then for our student growth and our teacher performance is that there is congruence between the two pieces of data. So if I have a teacher that's performing well according to T tests, theoretically, students should also be performing well, and so that's what that congruence looks like. And as a district, TEA says that we have to have a correlation coefficient of .24. So at the end of our data collection year, pulling all data together as a district, we were at a .32. It was actually a little higher than that from when I created this data. So we are considered to be congruent, and this is really important because this is the piece that will determine whether or not you get your system proven to be valid and reliable. Anyone who has not passed their system according to TEA that I've talked to, their congruence was below that .24 threshold. So we're very excited that we were, our, our data was congruent. Thank you. Well, CNI helped, and principals helped, and so it was a team effort, for sure. Last year, we had leadership capacity, and so teachers participated in certain activities, and they could submit it to me to, to receive points for leadership capacity. This year, we have moved to using Domain 4 of T tests because we feel like it'll be more stream, a more streamlined process, and so what that looks like then is very similar to their teacher performance rating. They receive a point value based on their rating for Domain 4, and so 4-point, Dimension 4.1 is professional demeanor and ethics, 4.2 is goal setting, 4.3 is professional development, and 4.4 is community involvement. So any leadership capacity activities that teachers participate in through the year, they can submit to their principal for a higher rating in one of these dimensions in Domain 4. And then based on their overall rating, they will be assigned a point value, and so they can earn anywhere from 2 to 10 points in this area. Any questions so far about our local designation system? Okay, so then our timeline, in October, we submitted data for the TEA and Texas Tech to review to determine if our system was valid and reliable, and we got a yes, it was. And so we were super excited about that. We found out in February. In April, we will find out if the designation determine, recommendations that we made for teachers will, will hold up, and we can let teachers know that they will receive that designation and the monetary amount that comes with it. And then in August, we will hand out money to our teachers to the tune of about a half a million dollars. So we are very excited about, about getting our system proven to be valid and reliable and rewarding our teachers for their hard work. This timeline is the same every year, so depending on the cohort you're in, you still submit your data in October, you still find out in February if your system's valid and reliable, if you're putting forth a new system, and then in April, you find out if your, your teachers receive the designations that you recommended, and then we pay out in August. Our teachers receive 90% of the funds that they generate. The district keeps 10% to help support the teacher incentive allotment plan. If they leave the district, their funds have to, they're going to stay in the, in the district, and the reason is because the purpose of the plan is to recruit and retain our teachers. And so we will keep the funds, but TEA says we have to disperse those funds on the campus that it was earned. So if I have a teacher at Garcia that decides to leave and go somewhere else, the money would then be dispersed on that campus, and what that would look like, I don't know yet. Will probably among that team, but that would be something we would talk about. And, but their designation will follow them, so if a teacher leaves here and goes to another district, they are still considered a designated teacher, and that district still has to pay them funds based on their enrollment and their, their low SES rating. So they don't lose the designation, they just lose the money if they leave us, so. So like I said, we are going to designate some teachers this year. We had 50 teachers that we nominated, and remember, that's only reading and math teachers, that's not any other teacher, science or social studies or art or whatever. So 26 we recommended for a recognized designation, 19 we recommended for exemplary, and 5 for a master. And so, like I said, that's almost a half a million dollars that we're going to pay out this year. And with that, that is my update. Do you have any questions for me?
Members, any questions? Dr. Ward? All right, thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it. Exciting. Item 2, consideration for approval of the 2023, 2024 Assistant Superintendent's Contract. Dr. Ott.
Yes. Okay, so tonight, I bring forth the Assistant Superintendent's contracts for you to renew for your consideration for renewal. I think I might hold Mr. Boyd since he didn't show up tonight, but everybody else, you can approve. I'm kidding.
All right, are there any questions? This does require approval? Is there?
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Myers. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for y'all's work. Appreciate everything. B, Academics, no items under that. C, Facilities and Operations, no items. D, Finance, no items. E, Student Services, no items. F, Board Committee Reports. One, Facilities Committee Update, meeting held Thursday, February 23rd, 2023 at 4:00 p.m. I'm Mr. Gaines.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. Meeting was called to order at 4:01 p.m. at Temple High School Fieldhouse. Mr. Boyd and Mr. Wolf provided updates on several other property items, including potential acquisition of a property near Operations, which the administration has decided to no longer purchase. Also, the potential purchase of a lot near Temple High School campus, who is still contemplating that, I think, the possibility of relinquishing Dixon Facility and the donation of property from Zeta Phi Beta Sorority in Merit, near Merit Dunbar. Also, Mr. Prentice led us on a committee member tour of the Fieldhouse, and he discussed a plan to renovate the facility to include classroom, meeting spaces, locker rooms for the wrestling program. The meeting was adjourned at 5:00 p.m. Our next meeting will be February, no, I'm sorry, March 30th at 4:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gaines. The Policy Committee Update, the Policy Committee met on Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023 at 4:00 p.m. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 p.m. by Linnell Davis, and a quorum was declared. Dr. Ott presented a proposed settlement agreement. It was moved and seconded to approve. Motion passed. Ms. Parks presented the recommendation to name the TH Library for Mary Adams. It was moved and seconded to bring forward Ms. Adams' name to the full Board for consideration. Motion passed. The process of submitting a low attendance waiver from February 2nd, 2023, and February 3rd, 2023 was discussed. The waiver was part of the consent agenda of tonight's meeting. Bob Temple of Zonda presented the Temple ISD demographic report. This report was presented at the regular Board meeting in April. The meeting was adjourned at 5:18 p.m. The next Policy Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 29th at 4:00 p.m. And there being no further business tonight, the meeting is adjourned. Thank, thanks, everybody, for attending.